All right, good evening. It is 6:06. I'd like to call the December 18th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education at Cape Girardeau School District to order. Let the record show that all board members are present. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is approval of the agenda. So you have before you an agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second?
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion seconded and carried. Next up, we have recognitions. The first thing is the Terry W. Kitchen Central Junior High Esports Championship, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Very exciting. I know they have had their esports program for, I think, three or four years now, a little bit longer than that. Coach Miller, I know he is here. Can you raise your hand? Oh, all of them are here. I'll have you guys come up here in just a minute and introduce yourselves. But we have two state, two students that competed at state and actually won first and second place. Jace Means won the state title with Jamison Wagner coming in second place. Can you two gentlemen come up here and the coaches? I will have to say that I watched it online on Twitch. I am, I'm not very techie, but I did ask Mr. Miller to send me the link so that I could watch it online, and I really enjoyed watching you two battle it out. Congratulations. Mr. Miller, can you bring your team up here and talk a little bit about what you guys do with esports and a little bit about your program? He's going to come up and brag on you.
Which one have you got first? You did, you're going to do next year.
We have two different teams currently. We have Rocket League that happens in the spring, and then our Smash team goes all throughout the year. So these guys will be back in the spring on our crew team. This is our coach, is Mr. McKinstry right here. He does all of our streaming and our tech problems, so he's the guy that takes care of that stuff because I can't. And then we got our head Smash coach who designs our program for these guys. Practices. And kind of things, but we thought we had, and then to some junior high guy that was basically like a grown adult. We'll see how we do.
Good job, guys.
Well, I guess we sit here because we have.
Next, we have Terrific Tigers.
Alamo Schrader Elementary, Maisie Oliphant, first grade daughter of Amber and Matthew Oliphant. She's not only dedicated to learning and doing her best academically, but she also demonstrates great behavior. She's an excellent helper to teachers and classmates and is always there to lend a helping hand when someone needs it. Congratulations, Maisie. Blanchard Elementary, Piper Lingo and Scarlett Lingo, daughters of Courtney and Patrick Lingo. When we think of attributes of a Terrific Tiger at Blanchard Elementary, we first think of love and kindness. These qualities combined with a deep understanding of service epitomize this month's Terrific Tigers. In fact, the love for others is simply too big to fit into just one child. It's our great pleasure to award December's Terrific Tiger Award to both Piper and Scarlett Lingo. Congratulations to both and keep up the great work. Clifford Elementary, Mercy Cox, fourth grade daughter of Kyla Han and Travis Cox. Mercy Cox is a wonderful student. She's very respectful, kind, and considerate to her teachers and peers. She's a great helper to both teacher and any student who needs it. She's a wonderful role model to all at Clifford and a joy to have in the classroom. Way to go, Mercy. Franklin Elementary, Macy Parker, third grade daughter of Beth Murray. Macy always follows directions, is kind to everyone, and always has a smile on her face. She is so kind, considerate, and helpful to her classmates. Macy is bright and always does her very best work and is supportive to all those around her. She is polite and strives to go above and beyond. Macy has proven herself to be an example to her peers. She is always respectful and is a good friend to others. Jefferson Elementary, Keshia Robinson, first grade daughter of Tisha Brandy. Keshia is always very respectful, tries her best, and is very good friend to all. She's willing to help others and is very kind and polite. Keshia's smile brightens everyone's day. She is the perfect example of a Terrific Tiger. Keep up the great work. Central Middle School, Leah Bennett, fifth grade daughter of Andrea and Eric Bennett. Leah is a student who's always follows expectations whether in the classroom, hallways, or recess. She's someone who can be counted on to help out around the classroom as well as helping out her fellow classmates. CMS is proud to have Leah as our December Terrific Tiger. Keep up the good work. Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Ryland Smith, eighth grade son of Gabrielle and Justin Smith. Ryland Smith is one of the brightest students this year, and bright in more than one way. Not only is he intelligent and hardworking in class, but always spreads light and happiness wherever they go. He is always willing to have a friendly conversation and to help his peers. He's a wonderful example of a Terrific Tiger. Central High School, Anne McDougal, twelfth grade daughter of Julian and Scott McDougal. Annie is the CHS Student Body President this year. She has demonstrated exceptional leadership skills while participating in sports and maintaining an excellent academic record. She has shown a deep commitment to lead impactful projects such as Fall Homecoming, Winter Ball, and Chain Links of Kindness Project for Special Olympics. She's a wonderful example for our entire student body. Central Academy, Cartez Wallace, ninth grade son of Cartez Wallace, Sr. From November, Jefferson Elementary, Zamaya Mentor, second grade daughter of Jakaya Henderson.
All right. Where can I be? Here. It's coming up here. So where would you guys be? Thank you all. All right.
Hey.
Can I borrow that jacket?
Yeah. I got you.
I still got some peeling in my heart.
Yes, to manage them, to be masters of their attention in a world brimming with stimuli. This is not achievable by enforced disconnection. This is only achievable through guided engagement and responsible usage. Additionally, apart from destroying the trust and respect of our students, this program will likely have no real effect. The only evidence for the effectiveness of these pouches comes from the company that manufactures them. In spite of having been in schools for over seven years, there is not one shred of peer reviewed credible evidence to their efficacy. All that we have are biased and flawed studies from the manufacturer. What they have sold you is a magical solution sold by con men to willing marks in search of easy solutions. It does nothing to address the underlying educational issues of this district. In conclusion, I urge the board to reconsider this policy. Let us not be the district who clings to antiquated notions at the expense of our students' real-world preparedness. Let us be the district that educates every student to be a successful, responsible citizen. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your concerns. Mr. Payne, did we have anyone else?
No, ma'am.
I have something to mention, but I didn't know about the rules.
You can contact Mr. Payne.
I have. I've called twice since Thursday regarding my son being suspended for a full semester.
Ma'am, again, we don't take public comments, especially what it has to do with a discipline issue. We usually meet in a, we usually meet upstairs privately so that we can discuss the incident. So if you're wanting to do that, you'll need to get with Mr. Payne in regards to that.
I guess I would love to.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is informational reports, and the first one is the Board President's Report. That's me. I have another little blurb to read. Cape Girardeau School District encourages qualified persons interested in running for a position on the school board to file to be a candidate in the April 2nd, 2024 election. There are two positions available with three-year terms. Interested persons may file at the Central Administration Office, which is here, and filing has already begun. It's available from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. on regular business days. Filing does end on December 26th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. When do the offices close?
On?
Are we open all day this week?
No, we close at 1:00 on Wednesday.
Okay. So the offices close at 1:00 on Wednesday, so if you're interested in filing, make sure that you either get it done this week or you...
Contact Mr. Payne.
Contact Mr. Payne.
Via email.
For the December 26th window. The next thing that I wanted to share with everyone is there is a Q and A session regarding the Yonder Pouches on January 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Kinder Hall at the high school. So for community members or parents who have questions, this is a great time to come and hear some additional information. Did you?
They'll also have the product there so that you can actually see what it does and how it works, and then the different designs that we have.
I have one more thing. Sorry. And then the last item I wanted to share is just a reminder about our next community engagement event, which is January 18th at 6:00 p.m. at Jefferson School. All right, now time for Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I don't really have a whole lot. We had a very short, short month. I've had a cold, so I have a cough drop in my mouth. I just wanted to take the opportunity to wish everyone a warm and wonderful holiday. Please enjoy the winter break, and I look forward to seeing everyone in the new year. Have a great break.
All right. Next, we have our CSIP and Program Evaluations, and the first one is for Elevate 3.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. So Elevate 3 is our goal that focuses around family engagement, and that's something we look to implement next school year, but we do have to jump on getting the members of that committee solidified. We've got three schools that we're still working on getting confirmation from families to participate in this group, but we will have that established by January. We'll share the names with our board once we have that finished, and then we look forward to gathering that group for the first time probably in January, February. Moving on to Elevate 4, this focuses more around our community engagement and our stakeholders. We actually are a little bit ahead of schedule. We had planned to meet for the first time after the new year, but we were able to squeeze in a meeting here in December, and that core group consists of our foundation. Ms. McDonald was in our first meeting. Mr. Cook was actually there as a member of our Booster Club. Ms. Keys was there as a representative of our Care to Learn program, and then Ms. Seiler was there from ABC Today. And kind of the focus of this group is to make sure that we're being efficient with our asks as we go to the community. We have a very giving community, but we want to make sure that we are being mindful of when we're asking for people to give, whether it be monetarily or also of their tuition. Another focus of this group will be to make sure that as we're looking for maybe events or volunteer projects that we implement throughout the district, that we're doing something that not only fits into our CSIP and aligns with our goals, but also it's something that our community members are proud to be a part of as well. So that group, again, will be really getting into the meat of that work after the new year, but we were very happy to be able to come together and really our first meeting focused around really kind of sharing what each group's focus is and just making sure that we're all aware of kind of each group's mission and defining kind of clear buckets as it relates to the way that these different organizations are supporting our students and staff members. So that's our update for now. We will be giving annual updates in December. Obviously, we don't have a lot to share this month because we haven't started the work yet, but just wanted to make sure that we kind of gave you guys a little bit of an update to know that we're moving forward in that work, and we look forward to sharing information as we continue with the work. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
The next item for CSIP Program Evaluations is Learn 2.
All right, let's see if my eyes can work from this far away. All right, so. Right? Nice and bold. So Learn 2 is all about student performance, and just wanted to share with you guys before we go into one of the first reports that we have that goes along with Learn 2, what our action steps are. So Learn 2 is all about developing the process to analyze our internal benchmark achievement data three times a year and to serve as a predictor for our MAP test. So this gives us, instead of having to wait until, you know, August or now to get our official results, as we just, they went public today, we have something internal that allows us to look at, you know, what we're doing as we're doing it instead of waiting months later to get back that data. And so we have been implementing this K8 last year, this year at the high school, and still, you know, working out the kinks with that in different areas, and, you know, that first year's always a little weird at a building, and so we're trying to sort out all of that. And so I stuck that as a 50% kind of where we're at in the process. Buildings will hold monthly data review meetings analyzing assessment data to drive instruction. Some places, some buildings, this was already in place, and all buildings, and some context was in place, and so, but we have a full process across the district now with our elementary and secondary coordinators. And if it's not monthly, it's bimonthly, and then they meet, and so, writing the mark there. And then analyzing state testing data to drive instruction. And so we're going to, this is ongoing because we're still working on the Academic Services Plan, which is a part of Learn 4, and to see all of the things that we want to, you know, pull into that to share with you all. And so, and then lastly, develop a process to address literacy gaps and assess literacy utilizing local and state reading assessments. And that's a new process this year. We've talked about that earlier on in the year with the RSPs, and it's really cool to see that, you know, we've done the second round of testing for that, and so it's kind of cool to see how much growth is happening with that and how many kids are, you know, they have to test out twice before they're off of the RSP and how many kids at each level is starting to come to fruition. We just finished up all that testing. We're analyzing the results now to see for next semester what that looks like. Let's see. As a part of Learn 2, we have our APR, and some of our APR data went public today, and so we got it last Tuesday, really, and so just wanted to share that with you all. And so here you can see overall, we've got 71.2% of our score of our possible points. Last year, we had only 180 points possible. This year, we have 190 points possible because they've added categories for this year. And so if you take some of those changes in the points and some other craziness that happened this week at the state level, they fixed our scores back up to 71.2. And so as you can see, speaking short on through here, we have our status, academic status scores, which we saw really no change on as far as the designation was concerned. Where we did see the change was on below average on our growth scores. You can see our, there's math and science there added, and you can see our growth scores were below average, even though on average our points as a district changed 0.15% to the negative. We got below average, and so we're still trying to figure out what the Missouri growth model is here, but as are other districts across the state.
As is Missouri.
As is all of Missouri. And so on top of that, we've got other scores we have here about college and career readiness assessments, and that's how we, how well we do on ACT, ORKs, and ASVAB, as well as our AP and dual credit courses. Below that are graduate, graduation rate scores, and then our graduate follow-up, which we missed by one person. We missed one point by one person, so we're hoping to make sure that we follow up with everybody, can get ahold of all 300 people, but, or people are categorized weird, you know, that kind of thing. And so, and then on the second page here, we have points for our CSIP, which we, as you guys know, we're just beginning, and this is the base year for this data for our CSIP and planning. And we have Culture and Climate Survey. These are more administrative things that we do and make sure that we do across the district. Our kindergarten assessment, our course planning and career planning, which is the ICAP, our attendance, our CTE expansion, that's all of our courses at the CTC, and then how well we do, you know, turning in our audit and our ASBR. It's all our finance. And so as a district, you know, there's a lot of information on this report, Mark. We utilize the same measures inside of a lot of our other data. When it comes to MAP and EOC testing, we already are looking at that data just like the state is, and so this is just a way for the state to, you know, compare between schools, and, you know, we use that as well for the same purpose. That's what we get the value from this report. But, I guess, you had any questions about?
So I guess, and part of the target with the CSIP is our Learn 2 will have a portal for the public, for anybody to go and easily see how we're performing as a district, see, you know, our APR and the other things that you guys see as pertinent to help demonstrate where we're at academically and make it easy instead of us having to dig.
That's right.
Be nice and simple and out in front.
Yes. Trying to find this information on Desi's website, you already have to know where to go to find it, but yes, we will have all of this posted as a part of that and linked into that same CSIP document. Here? Oh, did it already exit out of it? Maybe it's over here. Yeah, it will be, it will be linked into here going forward.
Well, I guess, the only thing I would say is I was excited upstairs when we talked about this before the meeting about some of the tools we have in addition to some of the Desi reporting here, like Galileo to look at even, you know, maybe not publicly, but classroom level, building level data that shows progression of our students and lets us understand what's working, what's not working, where do we make modifications? Because it sounds like some of this amalgamated reporting at the state level sometimes is hard to follow exactly what to make of it and how it's derived and what the basis of comparison are and things like that.
Yes, and so we've got, we have Galileo, which is very similar. They use the same analysis on all of the scoring that the state, EOC and MAP testing does, and so we can see, you know, at midterm or mid-year and toward the end of the year. So that allows us to see, instead of waiting until halfway through the next year, where to make changes before the next coming school year. And so, and just getting that part of the culture, part of the process is...
As well as being able to compare to schools who are more like us, too. I don't know, we discussed that.
Yes, yeah, and that's where, that's where we look at this, and just getting that data today, didn't have enough time to look at where we were at, like we had some time last year to be able to do that before the board meeting, to look at schools that, you know, economically, financially, demographically are like us and see how we, how we compare using the same data from every school across the state.
And we're planning to also make that available on the CSIP as well for kind of a...
Yes, it'll be through a different portal, but we can link it in the CSIP as well.
We could also do it again underneath our CSIP if you want us to do that next month once we get the data in, too.
I agree.
And we could just share that with you and then show you where we're posting it.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Thank you for sharing stuff with information you just got.
Yeah.
All right. Next, we have Academic Services Report.
That was it?
That was it? All right.
You can do it here.
Sorry, they just kind of like rolled in together. Okay, now we have our Community Teachers Report. Should we have a drum roll for you?
I only have three and a half pages today, so that's pretty exciting. So these are just shout-outs from each building that were provided by people of the staff of that building, so here we go. At Blanchard, thanks to Jessica Patinkin-Gill for heading up our amazing shopping and giving experience for the children with another great year of the holiday store. Christmas cheer has arrived. At Central Office, Colleen Reese has worked so hard getting us all set up with benefits and putting up with my "I don't know what I'm doing" issues. At Central Academy, Ms. Wadley has established very close relations with many businesses in the area and scheduled multiple professionals to come and speak to Jag students at Central Academy. She also has taken students to multiple employers to gain insight on job skills. At Clifford, Joseph Moore has been a great addition to our school. He has started a Clifford Choir with our third and fourth grade students that have already had some amazing performances. At the Early Childhood Center this month, we shout out all the adults in Ms. Amanda's room. Ms. Amanda is rocking her first year with her pair of professionals, Ms. Connie, Ms. Alita, and Ms. Sierra. Great job, ladies. At Franklin, Ms. Harer is an amazing...
All right, next we have Academic Services Report.
That was it?
That was it? That was it? All right.
You can do it again.
Great news.
Sorry, they just kind of like rolled in together. Okay, now we have our Community Teachers Report. Should we have a drum roll for you?
I only have three and a half pages today, so that's pretty exciting. So these are just shout-outs from each building that were provided by people of the staff of that building. So here we go. At Blanchard, thanks to Jessica Patinkin-Gill for heading up our amazing shopping and giving experience for the children with another great year of the holiday story. Christmas cheer has arrived. At Central Office, Colleen Reese has worked so hard getting us all set up with benefits and putting up with my "I don't know what I'm doing" issues. At Central Academy, Ms. Wadley has established very close relations with many businesses in the area and scheduled multiple professionals to come and speak to JAG students at Central Academy. She also has taken students to multiple employers to gain insight on job skills. At Clifford, Joseph Moore has been a great addition to our school. He has started a Clifford Choir with our third and fourth grade students that have already had some amazing performances. At the Early Childhood Center this month, we shout out all the adults in Ms. Amanda's room. Ms. Amanda is rocking her first year with her pair of professionals. Ms. Connie, Ms. Alita, and Ms. Sierra, great job ladies. At Franklin, Ms. Harer is an amazing music teacher. She provides the students with such great musical experiences. I love that I get to hear them all. At the High School, Adam Walker goes above and beyond every day, creating exciting ways for his students to learn, plus helping our students in tutoring. Sarah Watson, our administrative assistant, she juggles tons of jobs at the same time, takes on more jobs that come in, and continues to help anyone that needs it. As a new hire, this is not me personally, but as someone who submitted it, I would like to thank everyone at the high school for being so welcoming, kind, and helpful. I love my new CHS family. Ms. Price, our awesome librarian, does so much more than checking out books and re-shelving them. She cares about the students and the teachers and somehow finds time to talk to them. She also juggles ordering books, laminating projects, handing out loner computers, and about a million other things, always going above and beyond. At Jefferson, shout out to our new two, sorry, our two new custodians. We appreciate your hard work in helping make our school clean and tidy. Ms. Austin did a fantastic job hosting our lower school music concert. It was a great turnout and all the kiddos sounded great. Shout out to our administrators that are always adding a little fun aspect to the season. I noticed the staff responding to these fun antics through laughter and smiles. It creates a healthy fun culture throughout the building. Shout out to Ms. Coach, who has been a great addition to the first grade team this year. She is so kind and amazing with our students. At the Junior High, Ben Bellingier, Ben is not just a music educator. He works very hard as a lifeguard for ICU, making connections and building relationships with his students. Ben also invests lots of time building his guitar program. Recently, he was able to add a class of guitar at the high school. Thank you, Ben, for inspiring us and showing us dedication and compassion. Betty Crenshaw, Betty has always shown such enthusiasm and excitement for teaching her students, and she truly shows she cares about their successes. She's always working hard to engage them in new and exciting ways. At the Middle School, Leslie Smith, she has worked hard on making sure that our students have a great support system as well as leading the parade float for our building. She's constantly stepping in to help everyone out and take on multiple roles here at CMS. She is amazing and deserves to be recognized. Ms. Heckam, Ms. Bergoff, for doing amazing jobs with restorative circles in our building. We are so grateful for your support and consistency. Over 86% of our staff was recognized in the Connectedness Survey as a trusted adult. Outstanding. Shout out to Ms. Gorman for going the extra mile to cover tutoring so that students continue to get the extra support they need each week. A huge thank you to Nurse Paige. Not only does she ensure our students are happy and healthy, she is always there for her coworkers. Thank you for always caring so much for others and continuing to smile and spread joy, even on our roughest of days. A huge shout out to Ms. Christie, Ms. Tammy, and Ms. Vanessa for always stepping in and doing things that are well beyond their job description. You are appreciated. Shout out to Mr. Travis Wilson for joining our building in the middle of a full moon week and discovering the realities of middle school. Thank you.
Can we clap now?
Yeah.
I think she's great.
Yeah.
She quickly read over, but her name was on there about how great of a job she's doing at the middle school with Miss Heck with our students. So thank you, Shannon.
I think she does a great job reading that, too.
Yes.
Don't tell Tyler.
He just needs to, you know, practice a little more.
All right, next we have our Treasurer Finance Report. Ms. Dudek.
Okay, the report that I'm going to talk about is the November 2023 Fund Balance Report. And I am just going to focus on the General Fund and Special Revenue Fund. We started the month with a beginning fund balance of 11.8 million. 3.5 million was received in the General Fund. Some of that revenue is in advance on our taxes that we've received of $3 million. Expenses for the month were 1.9 million, and we transferred 1.4 million to the Special Revenue Fund, leaving us with the ending fund balance of a little over 12 million, which is higher than what we normally would have at this time because we started receiving our current tax payments. So thank you to all our taxpayers for paying their taxes early. I talked about this a little bit upstairs, but if there is another report out there, the expense and revenue detail, and if you look at that report, it will give you all of the details behind the numbers that make up the revenue and expenses on this report. And at the bottom, I have where the cash and investments are located. Does anyone have any questions?
Is that out of the ordinary, that advance being that size?
For November, I wasn't expecting them to send us anything in November, but they typically will start sending us in December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Board Reports. And then first one is the MSBA Delegate Report. Did I skip one?
That's all right. Just make sure you have air conditioning and... Move over your head.
Yes.
We all appreciate that.
So, quick update on Buildings and Grounds. Central Academy is moving along extremely well. A lot of the structural work is being done, and the elevator shafts are going to start being constructed over break. You'll start seeing a bunch of windows coming in as well, too, on the exterior. So we're really excited about that. So we're still currently on schedule that it'll be ready by midsummer to allow staff to settle in and get everything set up for the start of next school year. And if you're really interested, you can look at all the different sample colors that we're going through for flooring and carpet places, or not carpet plate, but carpet squares and cove base and so on and so forth. Our indoor practice facility, this morning, as I was going over the facility and working with our contractors, pretty much everything is framed up on the inside, so you can actually see the size of the locker rooms, the storage rooms, offices, and really appreciate now the size of how big that indoor field is going to be. They do have the forms all lined up for our long jump, triple jump, and pole vault pits. So again, you can appreciate what that size will be. They're really pushing hard to get as much enclosed as possible to get a little bit of heat in there in the upcoming weeks. So that'll be happening here pretty soon. And an update on the CTC project. We actually have another meeting tomorrow to go through a page turn to make sure all the documents that we're putting out to bid on January 2nd will be exactly how we want it. So bids, it'll go out for bid on January 2nd, bids are due on the 16th, and then that will be in front of you on the January board meeting if we have any acceptable bids. Other updates that we have, just to put out there, is on February 27th, we're really excited that we'll be hosting a one-day school safety summit at our CTC building in conjunction with the FBI. Mandy and I was on an organizational meeting with them today, and it's open to all school personnel and those within school districts, law enforcement, administrators, counselors, psych examiners, so on and so forth. On March 12th, we've also solidified we're going to be hosting a CES workshop on emergency operation plans. So we're inviting other school districts in our area to come in and get their emergency operation plans updated and what formats that that would look like and hopefully benefit not only ourselves but other surrounding districts as well. And with that, that's all that I have. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions? I'm glad you guys didn't let me skip him because he had a lot of good stuff to share with us. All right, now, MSBA Delegate Report.
Only update is they sent out their calendar for next year. So put those on your dates, the Friday Luncheon Learns, the Spring Summit, the Fall Stuff. All those things are on there, so you guys should all have it in your email. And just throw them in there. That's about all from just the MSBA side.
Legislative Report.
Nothing going on. They have their pre-session bill review of things that may come up again this year.
Okay. Next, we have Cape Public School Foundation Report. Ms. McDonald.
I was excited to see Esports, that's one program that I helped fund. And so that makes my heart happy to see them up and winning state awards. And so this morning, I met with Community Foundation of the Ozarks. They had a grant dealt to dental, and we've been awarded $10,000 for our Cape students. It is going to go to 400 students, and they are going to get three times a year a dental hygiene kit with the importance of why it's important to take care of your teeth. And then if there's some emergency dental funding, we will work with Care to Learn, and we will also help provide some of that care to our students. So super excited about that. We have the Penguin Party coming up on February 10th. It's our 18th annual, and it's going to be amazing, so I'm so excited about the plans. We still are looking for auction items and selling tables, and we still have some sponsorships available. So we'll be working on that through the holidays, and I hope everybody has a great holiday.
Thank you. All right, next is Approval of Consent Agenda Items, which includes minutes from November 20th and payment of bills. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Second.
Any discussion?
I need to abstain from that vote because there's a mileage check coming to me on that bills. Or do I need to...? No, is that...? Yeah, I don't think so.
No, you don't have to for reimbursement. Remember, we went through this? Because I forgot and I was freaking out.
It's a reimbursement. I was learning. How about it? Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? All right, those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion seconded and carried. Next on the agenda is Business. Do we have anything for that? I don't see anything listed there. All right, next is Information and Proposals from Board Members. Does anyone have something they would like to contribute?
Merry Christmas. See you next year.
It's almost, it's winding down. All right, with there being no further business to come before the board, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 6:52. We do have to reconvene for a closed session upstairs.